Welcome and thank you and welcome to the Town Council Personal Appointments Committee of June eighteenth, twenty twenty four. The time is five thirty. Call. Jill Rust, that's here. Dan Veskey's here, so everyone's here, just some. Nonsense we have, there's no public comment in the personal appointments meeting, but the comment is not on the agenda and. Personal appointments is a subcommittee of council of the whole, which also does not have a comment. It is the practice of the current personnel appointments committee not to interview those who are being reappointed or those who are in consideration for appointment unless we feel it necessary. We will only be interviewing new applicants to the ABC boards and commissions, those are a lot of other changes where instituted instituted to streamline the process and to be able to move applicants forward in a more expeditious manner. People moving from alternate to regular will move forward in the same manner as reappointments candidates do not need to reapply or go through the interview. You. Right. We have calendar communications. Alright, thank you, move to approval of the minutes.
Motion to approve the February twentieth, twenty twenty four minutes of the personal appointments committee.
Are there any questions? On our minutes? All those in favor of the minutes?
I.
I, I, that passed unanimously. Okay. Zero to zeros. Okay. Okay. Motion, do we have a motion for Jill for resolution for reappointing?
I move to recommend to the council a resolution reappointing the following individuals as noted. Paul Bates for Harbor Management Commission, Anne Sloan Raken for Harbor Management Commission, Kenneth Steer Junior for Harbor Management Commission, William G. Gaynor for Harbor Management Commission, Matt Ledrick for Harbor Management Commission, Tammy De La Cruz for Citizen and Police Committee, Randall Ortega for Citizen and Police Committee, and Dana Harfett for Citizen and Police Committee.
Second asking.
Do you have any concerns or questions on these candidates? Thank you for volunteering, thank you for volunteering. All those in favor?
I.
I, I. That's unanimously, read zero, zero. The next motion is for Ted Rathkin, Rathgen, who is a current alternate member in the Shellfish Commission. Counsel Kajaski.
Motion to move Ted Rathgen, um, alternate of the Shelfish Commission to full member of the Shelfish Commission. So moved.
Here. Um, but we're not.
Oh, that's right.
We don't need to interview, we all need to interview you because we, you're already been, you're already on appointments, so we can just. Yep. Make them move. Voting, yep.
Yep.
Uh, all those in favor?
I.
I. Passed unanimously, three, zero, zero. So Ted, that's all, all set. Sorry, I had to come out and that'll, you'll, that'll move to the council for final approval.
Yeah, it also, it also frees up the alternate.
Correct.
Is very important.
And we have a candidate tonight for Shellfish Commission, okay, fantastic. Alright, great, alright, thank you. Alright. First up, I guess, is that candidate Beatrice Mills for Shellfish Commission, come on up.
Motion.
Yep.
I move to recommend to the council a resolution appointing Beatrice Mills to this Shellfish Commission as an alternate member with the term expiring twelve thirty one, twenty twenty eight.
Second asking. Hello, let me just, I just want to get. First. She's on page nineteen. No, that's actually ten. She should be age. She's. You saw you.
We don't have.
I agree. I, reading.
I have a copy of my phone.
You're here in the motion. Sheet. Barbara. Barbara.
You don't have it in here.
Yeah, now, if we have motion, can we move it forward without the?
Just get, she's on the, she's on the, she's on the list, so.
List, so. Okay. Welcome. Um. Questions?
Can you tell us about yourself, especially since we don't have. No, great, um, so my name is Beatrice Mills, I was, I didn't know, currently, I grew up in Groton along Kings River on Church Street, and I'm at sixty six River View Ave. And basically, my experience in aquaculture and why I'm interested in the Shellfish Commission is because I studied environmental and sustainability studies and undergraduate for coursework at Louisville University, Maryland. On graduation, I started working at Matuna Oyster Farm as a oyster farmer. From there, I continued on to watch the oysters, so I have a background and firsthand experience in working actually on a farm in different growing methods and whatnot. And then I decided that I wanted to transition after that from working on a farm into a different side of aquaculture. And so I went back to URI to study aquaculture and fishery studies there. I did conduct study and contributed a chapter on Piggio, which is a prevalent. Infection that's going on right now in the waterways, especially in Groton, and so I do believe that's applicable. And then after that, I continued on to Cape Cod where I worked in at the Aquacultural Research Center. And so there I was able to grow algae, I helped spawn baby shellfish, so baby oysters claims that we supply a lot to the local farms up and down the coast. We've been, the Shellfish Commission orders frequently from ARC every year. And so, once I moved back from Cape Cod, I really wanted to become involved in the town and my professional career kind of transitioned into a different direction. But I wanted to maintain that kind of passion for myself selfishly, also I really care about Groton, I know that this is where I want to call home. And so being able to take that experience, passion, and really being able to participate in civic engagement and be able to contribute my own background diversity to the Shellfish Commission has become a pretty important component of my life. Thank you.
Um. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, thanks for coming out today, um, so you've mentioned you work in agriculture, have you had any current dealings with the Shelfish Commission? Um, in your career in the town of Groton?
I haven't, no, so this is quite new, so I, I kind of, once I came back from Cape Cod, which was within the past year, I really wanted to become more involved in the community. And a couple of my neighbors actually within knowing, they are part of the ground conservation advocacy group. And so that was my first step in joining their organization and becoming involved in the town of Groton and well, politics and civic engagement. And so I really wanted to take that because I loved the experience, but then. Put it to something that I was a little bit more passionate about and a little bit more direct. And so with my background in aquaculture, I began attending the Shellfish Commission meetings. And so this has been recent, so I have a nice touch here that I'm able to chat with him a little bit, but I really want to go in this new direction. And take my background and apply it to something a little bit more niche.
Well, I thank you for allowing the town to take advantage of your expertise in aquaculture. And um, thank you for applying and I will be in support of recommending you to the council.
Thank you so much.
Um, how many meetings have you gone to so far?
Two so far, but I have watched as many on YouTube as I possibly could.
So, so you have a good familiarity with them.
Yes, and I've definitely developed a rapport with the other commission members and members over at Yukon Acre Point as well. So just because of my experience in aquaculture, I've already had some of those connections with people that they're frequently in contact with already. So that's really helped out a little bit in coming familiarized with their frequent dealings and what they do on a basis as a Shellfish Commission.
Alright, great, terrific, thank you, thank you for stepping up and being part of the town.
Thank you so much for considering me.
You want to do that at the end or do them?
Do it, do it individually.
Do it usually, alright, um, we have motion on the floor. All those in favor of Beatrice Mills as a alternate member for the Shellfish Commission?
I.
I.
I. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
So the next, the next step for you will be, this will go to the council, there's a council votes on it, and then you become.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And we'll find your paperwork somewhere.
Alright.
The, it's, sorry, I, I saw it, I read it because I remember what you've said and I went, I read.
It's lit, it's listed, uh, she's listed on here, we've seen her application, but it's not part of the.
It'll come, it'll come out at the end of everything.
It'll come, yes, it'll come, alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright.
I move to recommend to the council a resolution appointing Lauren Gothier to the Planning and Zoning Commission as an alternate member, the term ending, I'm sorry, with the term end date of twelve thirty one, twenty twenty six.
Second, okay, I see.
Thank you, Lauren.
I know Ted, from my experience in.
I know, I was gonna, you know all that, a lot of, some of that stuff.
Yeah, yeah, I haven't been in the business for a few years now, but, okay, that's, sounds like an amazing.
I think, good candidate.
Absolutely, yeah.
Do we have questions for Lauren?
I do. I do. How are you?
Well, how are you?
Hanging in there, um, I got a couple zoning related questions and then I have a couple past experience in the town questions for you. Uh, my first one is, can you tell me what RM zoning code means?
An RN zoning code?
M.
M?
Yep.
Um, I couldn't off the top of my head.
There's, there's twenty one of them, so.
So there's, there's twenty one of them, I've used the zoning code plenty of times in my past career, um, it's pretty, once you familiarize yourself with it, it's easy to look that up on a, as need basis, but.
Alright.
I'm off like, I don't know if I can.
Yeah, and I'm gonna ask another one too as well, um, can you tell me what RS twelve zoning code is?
RS twelve?
Yeah.
Like residential twelve?
Yes.
Twelve foot offset?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, and do you have an ID?
What's the RM, just for my.
RM is residential multi-purpose, or like, I make excuse or something, yeah.
Okay.
Um, do you know why the reason I was asking those zoning codes in particular? It is the current zoning regulations of Pleasant Valley and SP Butler, um, which are currently going through the TOE committee process. Um, and I just, I wanted to know what your opinion on is when and if zoning code should or be changed, uh, because you will have that authority if you're promoted from alternate member to full member.
Sure, um, I think it's done as, as needed, I know there's, you know, um, periodic refreshes of the entire code. I know that individual parcels will be examined as the town determines different uses for it, um, you know, some of the, the zones are outdated. I believe Pleasant Valley, if I recall, was rezoned when the town decided to put up for sale somewhere right before after, um, it went from residential to the multi-family. Uh, because that's what the town determined the, the need for the parcel would be in the future, so, um, you know, as, as the need comes up, I believe it's a discussion, it's not like a single kind of thing. And it would be determined either if it's parcel by parcel, what the needs of the community are at the time, what the, the respective use would be. And then, um, the periodic refreshes of the entire code, typically the town works with a consultant, right? Um, and, and kind of comes up with a plan based off of the plan constitution development and other applicable things, um, environmental, economic.
Alright, thank you, um, those are my zoning related questions, um. I'm gonna say this first, I am gonna vote yes for you tonight, however, I, I do have, I do have concerns.
I, I know I have been vocal on a number of different planning things, so I'm totally.
Which is where I'm gonna get to.
Sure, sure.
Um, so, um, so you were on the twenty twenty three Property Use Committee document, uh, committee that produced a document. And, um, in your opinion, looking back at it, was it a legally sound produced document?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't understand the concern, what was the concern?
I, well, that, from the town attorney's opinion on, that I received when I was councillor on September fifth, there were multiple legal concerns. So that's why I asked if you had a potential change in perspective on it.
Was, are you asking how the document was produced legal or the contents of the document?
The contents of the document, yes.
So we received comments from the town attorney, um, multiple times, um, at least twice, I think. And each time we adjudicated them so that by the time it got to that final draft that went to the council, we felt as a whole committee, um, that we had fully addressed it. And I don't believe that we got final comments, like the, the last version that we did submit, I don't recall getting comments from the town attorney on that, but I do believe that the, um, at least attempted to, to resolve those issues.
Okay, alright, um, because just, it leads to my concern of the willingness to listen to a town attorney opinion if it were to come about, um, just, just wanting, you know, obviously it's an opinion. But I, I do, um, I would like the, I do appreciate when town attorney's advice is listed because they have the best, in my opinion, they have the best interest of the town advantage.
Yeah, like I said, we, we listened to all of the attorney, uh, comments that came in and we discussed it, we had an hour, like those meetings were so long, uh. So yeah, we, we incorporated.
Yeah.
I think pretty much all of it, um, unless we thought, you know, it was a rewrite, that was the issue, not the actual.
Okay.
Substance.
So then this leads me to the most concerning, um. There was a potential use to do a power of initiative, um, when you were an RTM member to get that document on the agenda. Um, and I remember that eating vividly. And I had, I still had concerns about how you conducted yourself in that meeting. For example, at one hour fifty three, twelve seconds, um, when a recess was called to figure out some rules, um. It was recessed, but the mic picked up the audio and you said, this is politics, they don't like, there was some audible, they don't like councillor Scott Westerville at the time, they're running for town council and they're trying to win seats. I was deeply troubled by this because as a public official, um, you know, what happened in the campaign happens in the campaign, but when we come to elected office, um, it is my opinion that we conduct ourselves with professionalism and, um, I have tremendous respect for councillor Westerville, I think he's a fabulous individual, um, he was a player to serve with. But, so it was comments like that that really, um, that kind of bothered me a little bit and I just, I won one as from one young person to another, I wanted you to make aware that, you know, I wasn't the only one that had those concerns. Um, and, you know, as a younger, as two young people, um, it's hard enough to get a seat at the table. Um, and I don't want anything for, um, people in our generation that could kind of back on that. Um, and then there was also some, um, potentially speaking for other members during that time at one forty six, forty six, the moderator had called you out on that. I understand that it could be an emotional process and a heated moment and, you know, you're trying to get an issue you're passionate about, and I understand that. So, um, but those were just, you know, a couple of my concerns and I just wanted to, um, let you know them, um, that I did have those concerns. Um, but we do need new volunteers, um, I like that you represent a portion of the community that, um, is underrepresented in the town. And I thank you for applying, thank you for volunteering.
Glad to have that deal within a long time, um, for those of you on the record, I was the moderator.
Yeah.
Um. I'm gonna go with the positives here, um, I want to say thank you for volunteering, A. B, I want to say thank you for volunteering from a neighborhood that desperately needs more representation in the community. So those are my two huge thank yous, you've always been very, um, involved in the community, um, and I do appreciate that, I appreciate your voice. And I've called you before for advice and I hope that that will not be my last time calling for advice, um, I do kind of echo some of the same concerns, um. But I will support you absolutely on this, I do ask that you, um, listen to attorney's opinions because that is something that has come up as a concern from other people, not, not you specifically, um, but from other people. And that would just be my big push, um, and that is, those are my only comments.
Again, also thank you for coming from District Four, we definitely need people from that, so, thank you for doing that. So my question is, we learned recently, um, much as we deal with affordable housing and mixed housing and all the different kinds of housing, that somewhere fifty, sixty, somewhere in there, the duplex, triplex and quadplexes were basically zoned out of the zoning rules for the town of Groton. And so we only really have houses or we have apartment buildings.
Oh, sure.
And we've realized that a lot of the housing that might fit into, you know, the categories could really be in.
Especially with the smaller weird parcels, yeah.
With the really small, and we had that, a lot of that housing, but I think at some point it was, it was ruled out, so just sort of like your view on, I would love to see some changes that might happen and where you sort of stand on that.
Yeah.
That kind of.
Um, as an alternate right now, if I was elevated such by the council yourselves, uh, I don't know how much I could influence that, but, you know, I have been, um, very vocally advocating for the plan of conservation and development, I don't know to what extent zoning changes could come through that document, but I think that it's something worth speaking to. And from, I, you know, I've watched the planning and zoning meetings, um, and they do, uh, seem to be taking this issue very seriously about some of the, we'll call them anomaly kind of parcels that are big but not big enough to get like an economical use out of single family homes and they're trying to be creative and I really appreciate that. So if, if anything, if I would, I, I would advocate for that, right? It's, uh, I think the more options and tools we have in our zoning kind of kit, um, to make available to folks is better. You, you want to have more options and then work together with a developer to try to find the right solution for the community that, that particular development is being proposed for. The more tools you have in that kit, the better, so I would, I think, support seeing that those style, um, developments come back onto the list of available options. I don't know why, would, do you have any background?
No, I was surprised, it was, Director Reiner said it in a comment and you were, I was like, oh, well, that explains a whole lot.
I'm thinking of a recent meeting that they had where they were starting to talk about ways that they could reuse mobile home allotments since we, we've decided not to allow any more mobile home pack. But how can we use those parcels? Because I think that those size parcels are exactly what you're looking for, right? And especially you start thinking about like duplexes or tiny homes or, um, kind of when you, community style homes where they kind of all look into each other and make little courtyards, stuff like that, um, I think would.
Yeah, I think housing has gotten so expensive.
Oh, my God.
To, to build a house, and I think last year we built seven houses.
Yeah.
I think in Groton and.
Yeah, it was, it was, I was, we, I, we, the largest development, uh, Director Reiner had, uh, said to me was a private like family compound off of one of the.
On Allen.
Allen Street, thank you, off Allen Street, that was the largest development in his ten years of, like.
We, we have the units coming online at Sealy, which is in my neighborhood.
Yeah.
And I supported that as an RTM member.
Yeah.
No, we need all kinds, but I mean, all kinds, sort of encouraging, yeah, encouraging and I'm hearing that to open up.
I think we need to be creative in Groton, um, and what I will say is, um, my, I've been engaging my employer, um, on how we can be more supportive in the community, get some more public support for the town of Groton to develop more houses, I think it's needed, um, in a lot of different ways, uh, I've always seen it as a urban center of, of Connecticut, not that we're a very urban state, but if you, population wise, services wise and, and more physically located, I wish we would capitalize more on, on some of those, uh. So that definitely something I'd encourage my fellow members and if elevated, of course, um.
Alright.
That's.
Terrific.
Of course, big plug for the plan of conservation, like my passion project right now.
Um, any more questions? How was that? Right. Um, all those in favor of Lauren Gothier, Gothier moving to an alternate position on the Planning and Zoning Commission? I, I.
Thank you.
Right, thank you. Same thing, you'll be.
Good seeing you.
You'll be moving up to the.
Do you know which, uh, meeting that's scheduled for?
Probably the first meeting in July.
Yeah, it'll be down, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Best of luck to you.
Right, thank you. Alright, excellent.
Chairman Jones. Motion to recommend a resolution appointing Anna Truski and Christopher Donahue. Oh, okay, got it, Christopher Donahue to the Performing Arts Commissions as full members with a term end date of twelve thirty one, twenty six. Um, I know Mr. Donahue is in the office, uh, in the audience right now, but can we do Miss Truski first so I can figure out how to use this?
I'm gonna second that.
Yeah. Miss Truski, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, perfect.
Can you, can you see me too, or just hear me?
Just hear you. I just see. Yeah.
Okay, I really wasn't sure.
Yeah, but just hearing you is all we need, right, Chairman Johnson?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, 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 all we need to do is be able to hear you.
Yep. I can see and hear you.
Okay.
I can find your.
Page twenty five.
Twenty five, alright. Counsel Veskey, I'll let you go first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, well, I was, well, uh, in full transparency, Miss Truski, um, had reached out to me about, um, getting members, um, to apply, um, to the Performing Arts Commission. I incurred, I asked her to apply, um, but I do, I am the chairman of that, um, so I am familiar with Miss Truski, she lives in my neighborhood. Um, but I do have general questions for all of the potential members, um, so, um, I'm gonna start with that, Miss Truski. The first question I have is, as Chair of the Performing Arts Commission, I'm hoping to bring aboard members who have a connection in the arts community. What are your connections in the arts community, specifically in the town of Groton?
So I'm on the Board of Groton Regional Theater, um, I was on the board for ten years and then I took a break and I've been back on for about, um, eight months or so. And recently, um, produced the first full, um, fully staged production since COVID, which kind of knocked the group on its butt a little bit, um, as it did with all the other theater groups in the area. Um, so I, I have done lots and lots of work with JRT over the years, even when I wasn't on the board, um, directing plays and producing and doing publicity and, um, lots and lots of other tasks, um, associated with producing shows and. Um, I'm also, I also have friends and connections and involvement in, um, other communities as well, or, or have had involvement at various times and know lots and lots of lovely people in our state who do theater.
Thank you, Miss Truski, I see you all over Facebook promoting those events, um, so it's very nice. And then, so my next question is funding for the arts, um, nowadays comes from donations and grants and ticket sales. What experience, if any, do you have obtaining, um, those for, and obtaining these particularly for the arts?
So I truly do not have experience, um, doing grants for the arts, I was on a grant writing team for a nonprofit several years ago, but it wasn't an arts related organization. Um, so I really haven't done, um, grant writing for the arts at this point. Um, but, you know, fundraising, I mean, I've been involved with, um, you know, times when we've gone around to get, um, ads for programs, you know, from businesses in the community and that type of thing, um. And, you know, occasionally con- contacting businesses to ask for donations of various items, but, um, that's pretty much it as far as that side of things is concerned.
Okay, um, Chair Jones' point of information, um, are we gonna, is, are we ask, are we gonna do Mr. Donahue, ask Mr. Donahue separately? Or are we gonna do it all once because it's all together as one motion?
It's one motion, I think we can do it.
Okay, so then I'm gonna ask Mr. Donahue.
Yes.
The, thank, Mr. Donahue, you're the only applicant I, I do not have the pleasure of knowing a little bit, but thank you so much for applying. Uh, my same questions to you, um, as Chair, the first one is, as Chair of Personnel and Appointments Commission, I'm hoping to bring aboard members who have connection in the arts community. What are your connections specifically in Groton and what is kind of your experience in that all?
But, okay, um, I moved to Groton, uh, originally in, when I came down from Boston in, uh, twenty twelve, I lived on, uh, High Street. And, uh, I had retired from Fidelity Investments, but my first job out of college was with Trinity Square, which is a.
but my first job out of college was with Trinity Square, which is a nationally recognized theater province. And, uh, I'm the public relations person there. Uh, since then, uh, I kept my sort of fingers into the theatrical world is that I went to Emerson College to get a master's degree and became a television producer because it seemed to me that's what money was gonna be. Uh, and it was for a while. Uh, I did that for a while, but always again followed the theater thing. And when I came down here, I immediately got involved with, um, Granite Theater in Westerly. And, uh, I acted in six plays there until I joined the Board of Directors and then became president of the Board of Directors. And at there's where I sort of put all of my business acumen and my ability to fundraise, which you just brought up, uh, to really up their game. So I introduced a- all sorts of revenue streams from a program ads, which they hadn't had before, to online ticket sales, to forming a committee of grant writers on a volunteer basis. And we received grants from Rhode Island Council of Arts, State Council of the Art Riska. Uh, and I actually moved to Wesley, uh, just went back. And I came back, uh, to Wesley, my partner, uh, on the house on, it still does, on Belair Drive. And, uh, we're very close. As a matter of fact, I found out about this commission because we were getting a license to legitimize our relationship as a marriage. And so it's, uh, performing arts, wow, this would be great. Uh, and I think I have a lot to offer. Um, the perspective of theater management, acting, uh, I haven't directed as Anna has. And I know Anna because Anna and I were both in The Importance of Being Earnest. That's how we met. She was Lady Bracknell. The butler. So, uh, and, and I think she's terrific. She's a writer. I saw her recent show at the Senior Center here in, in Groton, uh, about Mother's Day, which is terrific. And actually, I first came here, I said, why doesn't Groton have a theater? This is crazy. Now, of course, COVID's really, it's, it's soon, but some people I talked to said, well, it would if people would support it. I'm like, well, yeah, but you, you can't get them to go to a theater if it's not here. So we started scouting barns, churches, and who's gonna make, have to make a theater. That was my dream, but it didn't happen. When we had the fire, uh, the, uh, this was strength inside.
Yep.
The big fire at the, near hour thirty-six, I thought, great, now I get a big space. Parking lot, theater, that one can happen because they wanted to do something else, but obviously. But I then saw, wow, look at that, the, uh, school, the, uh, oral school. There's a theater already there. Well, you can do something with that, then all that stuff. And. Well, it's sort of like, okay, so I don't have, I mean, I did work in St. Edward, Massachusetts. I was in an agency that put workers who were, we called it, well, it was called the Industrial Services Program. And my job as Communications Director was to not raise money because it was a quasi-publication. So we had federal funds, state funds, and private funds. It was my job to sort of saddle up to General Motors and General Electric, all the big guns, because they were closing. That's when we exported all those jobs. So the generals were closing and the people were making lots of money putting cars together, which you maybe not remember that they did that in Massachusetts. There's actually a plant that made automobiles. Wow. When, but you know, what happened to that? Well, it went away. So people are making five dollars an hour, recycling cars. Then all of a sudden, oh, you're in the new service economy. Would you like fries with that? You know, so family, so we set up this thing where Ted Kennedy actually put something called EDW, which was the environmental something, something works act, which was to take funds and say, let's retrain these people. So this CAD CAM uh, design, period design, um, all sorts of different jobs. And we had, we set up these training offices. It was really terrific. It was actually the only Massachusetts miracle agency that made it through the scrutiny of the, of the national press. And I was very proud of that because Fortune Magazine said it's the only one that's really doing what they say it's doing in Massachusetts. After that, so TV, then that. And I went back to education at Washington University. You, you have my resume.
Yeah, yeah, we do.
I, I should, I published it, you, you can.
Yeah, we, we do. Yeah, you don't have to cut through all of it.
Okay. Um, so anyway, questions for me, I guess. I'm excited. I mean, I'm happy.
He answered my second question as well on the first question, so I'm fine.
Yes. Um, for both of you, the Arts Commission is brand new. What do you envision for this committee and for Arts in Groton in two years and in five years?
Okay.
Anna, did you hear my question?
Did.
Anna?
Did you hear my question?
Yes, I did. Are you asking both of us or just me right now, or?
Both of you? So whomever wants to go first?
I'll let you go first.
Anna, do you wanna go first? So what do you envision, um, for this committee and Arts in Groton in the next two years and then the next five years? Like, what are your dreams?
So, um, well, because Groton Regional Theater is, is an active, longstanding, uh, theater group, I would like to see them, um, you know, as part of this commission, you know, doing, um, regular seasons of shows, getting, um, perhaps doing a children's show every year. Years ago, Groton did do a children's show every year. And there was an organization called Groton Art Waves that, uh, sponsored, um, various types of entertainment in the summer. And honestly, I don't know who was in charge of Groton Art Waves, but I do know that, um, they got, um, Groton Regional Theater involved in doing, um, for example, children's plays. And in, I think it was two thousand eight, I, I wrote and directed and produced one. And for, under Groton Art Waves, it was done for free for children in the community at Fitch High School Auditorium. And it was, it was for free, like I said, and that auditorium was absolutely jam-packed with kids. And it was, you know, they just loved it. And we also went to Charles Barnum School, which is over by the sub-basin, did it for kids there. So that kind of, um, community liaisoning, I think, is, is really important and having definitely definite activities for children, um, that get them, um, at least involved in seeing the arts, if not actually participating in the arts. Uh, so that would be one, one aspect of it. And, you know, just getting, um, people in the community involved in, um, you know, writing for theater and, um, I, I've been wanting to, but just, this is just personally, I've been wanting to, um, teach improv for the town of, um, Groton. I take some writing classes through the town and, um, you know, get people involved with improv and maybe, you know, start up a troupe that is Groton-based that would perform, you know, locally and, um, just doing lots of different things. But of course, the arts isn't just theater. It's also, um, other art, the other arts, you know, the art arts, you know, painting and all that other stuff. And I, you know, I don't have a background in that. But of course, that needs to be nurtured as well. So, um, you know, I, I would wanna see taking a broader look, um, at the arts and getting different aspects involved. You know, dance, um, music, um, and, you know, the visual arts as well as the performing arts. So just more activities, more community involvement. Um, you know, perhaps teaming up with those who are teaching through the town and, um, you know, having a, you know, exhibits of, of art by our community members up in the library and, you know, in other places that are highly visible. And just, you know, encouraging people in our community to, to create, because everybody's creative. Everybody has some ability, whether they think they do or not. And, um, so it's not just for one group of, you know, of people to do. It's, it's, the arts are for everybody. Um, and so, you know, in two years and I'd like to see, you know, more of that kind of activity. And then in five years, just have, um, things that are in place, that are happening on a regular basis that, um, involve many aspects of the arts and many people in the community. You know, having somebody who's, who's, you know, uh, has expertise and background in the visual arts, kind of spearheading a whole, um, you know, a whole segment of, um, activity that would fall under that category. And, you know, just finding ways to team up, doing things at the, um, Thrive Fifty-Five, um, doing things at, um, perhaps, I know we've Groton Regional Theater has been looking at the little theater that's over at Fitch Middle School in the Community Center for a long time. And I'm not sure what the status of that is, but it would be wonderful to get that, um, fully up to code and up and running um, and have things going on there. I mean, the sky's kind of the limit when it comes to arts.
Oh, thank you.
It's just a matter of, of really enlist, so this would be another thing, is really enlisting a very dedicated cadre of volunteers to make things happen because one person alone can't do it, two people, three people can't do it. Um, so that's kind of, in my, in my blathering way, that's kind of.
Thank you, Anna.
You're welcome.
Alright, well, um, I would end to that by this. I would say, uh, one of my backgrounds is in planning the project management, knows that fidelity, that's really buzzwords all the time. And I think the two and five, you actually write a plan. But I should say, here we are, this is where we wanna be in two years. How are we gonna get there? So you map it out. You actually really create a map. And, uh, what I would say is everything you just said is terrific. It now needs to have, that would be the wishlist. How do you get to the wishlist? Well, I like to use it maybe biologically. You have to have the bones. So we create the skeleton. So who are the hands gonna be? Are they volunteers? Who's ready? That might be us as this, uh, commission. Say, okay, where are we gonna get to? How are we gonna get there? Sounds a little vague, but it's not. If you really write it down on paper, I believe in paper. Uh, you know, writing it down so that you know, you have a checklist. The last two things I've done, I also have a, uh, on the board of a film, uh, organization. So it's a distributor of films called Green Planet Films, based in Stonington. Founded by a woman, uh, twenty years ago, focused on environmental films, which was really hot. I mean, it's now even hotter, no pun intended. Uh, but we have expanded our, over three hundred in our library, schools, colleges, all pay a fee to show these. We've had public exhibitions. We've teamed up with Mystic Luxury Cinema to show them there. And we also run now, we successfully at Seaport Film Workshops with kids, high school age, middle school age, come in and make a film. They make a film, a two-minute film. But they learn about writing, they learn about visual, uh, stuff and cameras and you take an iPad and you make a film. Now we've done it at Stone Beach recently for seniors, same thing, except their focus was, uh, oral history, remembering their life, telling their, sharing their lives with the young persons making a film. Engaging community is what arts is about. And I think I can see Groton sharing in that kind of, I mean, I, I also helped open up the, um, Niantic Bay Playhouse recently, because I saw, okay, film, which I love film. But the cinema is dead, dead. What are you gonna do to that building? It's right on Main Streets, we're just right on the bay. So there was an East Lime Visual Theater, similar to Groton's, except it was very active. Mostly focused on high school age, but lots of adults too, putting out fantastic shows. And I said, that's it. So I may have read it, uh, was in the day. Here's an opportunity, building right downtown, parking, got everything going on. And of course, now it's hugely successful. They're making lots and lots of money. And, uh, that's, that's, that's only one of the things. I mean, they're also, they're also like goodwill. The businesses are all involved in it. I just got three thousand dollars. Millstone, to show them that we have an already cataloged, it's called Atomic Oil. It's the good side of atomic energy. Everybody talks about disasters. There've been three disasters in thirty-five years. Three, Chernobyl, we can name them, Three Mile Island, and the one in, uh, Japan, which was caused by an earthquake. So that wasn't, oops, we got nuclear energy going crazy. No, it's an earthquake. So atomic energy is really, I'm, I'm not pitching atomic energy, but you know what I mean, I get all. Because, because I, I got so involved in learning about this, you know, global warming is nothing compared to, uh, species disappearing, invasive species of plants and animals because of these huge, uh, boats that are bringing all this stuff in. They're also bringing all these creatures. So they're telling me something about here in, uh, Groton. There's a new bug that's gonna eat everything.
I think we ventured off.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Yeah.
That's how I'd approach it. I'd say, let's make a plan.
Make a plan. Thank you.
If I might inter, if, if I might interject something, um, one of the, one of the reasons that Niantic Bay is so incredibly successful is that there was an existing theater there that has all of, you know, the components of, of, that you would want to have in a theater. You know, it has a little upstairs, um, uh, screening room where, um, Nikki Checker, who te- teaches writing through the town of Groton, and I've taken many of his classes and, um, he screened his films up there years ago, um, that he wrote, um, that were filmed in our area and that type of thing. And one of the things that, that Groton Regional Theater has been, you know, wishing for, for, for decades is dedicated, um, theater space. And I know they looked at the old theaters that used to be in one of the shopping plazas in Groton at one time. And, and that would be, that would be a goal for the future, would be identifying a location that could be a dedicated, um, performing arts. Um, and also with room for visual arts as well and classes and that type of thing. Um, I don't know whether that could happen in the Fitch Middle School or if there would be another location that, that we're not aware of. But, um, if such, such a location could be identified and, and, uh, rehabilitated, renovated, a- adapted, um, that had a nice, you know, good parking and all of that, that would be really fantastic to bring, um, the arts to life.
Study that.
Alright, Anna, thank you. I think.
You're most welcome.
I was gonna ask, he has a good.
Oh, I have. Our readings are gonna be so much fun. I have a plethora of notes.
Think we can, okay. All those in favor of, um, Anna Truski and Christopher Donahue is becoming full-time members of the Performing Arts Commission?
Aye.
Aye, that's right. Alright, so thank you very much. Donahue, thank you, Anna. And what will happen next is, uh, this will be moved to the council for a final vote and then, um.
Maybe they will notify us.
Don't notify you and.
I'll call a meeting.
He'll call a meeting.
That's good.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you very much too. Have a good evening.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Chris.
If Tom Reddett. Council Russ, can you read the motion for?
No, I move to recommend to the council a resolution appointing, um, to the Performing Arts Commission as a full member with a term and date of twelve thirty-one twenty-two-four.
Second, pass.
Is that correct?
Yes.
The date?
Yes, the date is correct. Yep.
Staggered.
Oh, it's staggered.
It is.
Hello. Hello.
Oh, how are you?
I'm doing well. I'm doing well.
Can you hear us? Okay.
Yes, I can. I've heard you for the entire drive from the Guarneri Airport, so I think I'm doing okay.
Alright, so, uh, just, yeah, I was gonna speak, so, um, Mr. Reddett, I have the same questions I asked on the previous members who had a different term, but of course I left that page. Uh, my first question, as Chair of the Performing Arts Commission, I'm hoping to bring aboard members who have a connection in the arts community. What are your connections specifically in Groton?
Yeah, so I, um, grew up in Groton. I went to Fitch High School.
Yeah, so I, um, grew up in Groton. I went to Fitch High School, um, graduated twenty eighteen. Um, and then I went on to New York City, studied at Manhattan School of Music now for six years and and am now doing graduate work at Columbia Teachers College. In regards to my connections in Groton, I'm on the sub list of the Eastern Connecticut Symphony Orchestra. I know the board of that. I also know the boards of the, um, the United Theater and their, their music programs there, Sains Valley, uh, Music School. I have a position now there as cello instructor as well as at Connecticut College. I also, um, have my own, uh, arts organization called Mystic Chain Music Series. Um, that is, goal is to bring classical music to the Southeastern Connecticut and as well as classical music, as well as classical music education. Um, and so we put on concerts every other month, just about, um, at different churches in the area. Um, I also have done things, uh, with the Granite Theater. I've played in, I've played in their pits in different uh, productions as well as other theaters throughout the area. So any, any, whenever music happens, I kind of know the people who are doing it, at least in the Gotten area or going towards New York.
Uh, and then my second question is funding for the arts nowadays comes from donations or grants. What experience do you have in obtaining um, in particular for the arts, if any?
Yeah, yeah. So I, I have lots of, uh, experience in grant writing. I have interned and worked at multiple chain music festivals throughout the country, um, including Bridgehampton in New York, um, Music at Menlo in California, Napa, California, as well as CMS here in New York City. Um, and at each of these, I was asked to help proofread and, uh, start composing grants to be written. Now I've taken that kind of expertise being kind of like mentored by these amazing executive directors and kind of made it into my own with my own, um, Mystic Chain Music Series where we've won about two or three grants in the past, just I think three or four months. Totalling about ten thousand dollars. And so, um, yeah, I, I have lots of experience with grant writing as well as, um, fundraising and ticket sales and all the things that go with that as well.
Those are for me, Chair Jones. Thank you, Mr. Redette.
Council Russ.
Thank you. Hi, Tom.
Hello.
The Arts Commission is new. What do you envision for this commission and for arts in Groton in two years and in five years?
Yeah, I think as kind of touched upon by the other candidates, I think that art in Groton is very interesting because we are kind of sandwiched between this New Haven cultural life surrounded by Yale and um, the Newport kind of culture. Um, these are two cultural hubs of the East Coast. Um, and a very big arts organizations. I, but I think that there's kind of a a lack thereof here in, in the, the Gotten area. Um, I really hope that through this commission, it will, yes, of course, I, I love all the ideas that were already thrown out about having things run by the, the town itself. But I, I hope at least, um, in my vision of it, that the commission will help create it, make it easier for arts organizations to thrive in Groton and thrive in this area. I think that, um, by helping with, um, venues as well as maybe some funding or even advertising, I think all these things would make it so arts organizations could thrive here in the area easier, allowing for organizations from the, uh, the outside to come in and kind of work in our area or even new ones to kind of form out of, um, out of the, the people. Um, so I think in, in two years, I really hope to, of course, uh, have initiatives that come out of the commission itself, but more specifically have, um, initiatives of the commission to help revitalize art in the area. Would you, if you know Neo Theater, changing executive directors and all this kind of different, uh, change that's happening, same with the, uh, Eastern Connecticut Symphony Orchestra, changing board directors. Um, really kind of acting as a stalwart of the community that can help bring more art and more culture to our little town.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom, for coming and, uh, for appearing in front of us. I don't have any particular questions per se, but um, just to comment that when we were in the process of the Mystic Oral School and the possibility of a theater, we had more arts organizations than we had ever heard of come out to, to be excited about that, to do something. So I think between the three candidates we have tonight, we've got a nice range of skills and, uh,
Expert range of expertise.
Writing, business and doing the arts. I think so. I'm excited about, um, where this can go, what we can do here. I think this is a, is a, uh, is a, is a great opportunity and it's nice having the music side of things. And, uh, I'm part of the, uh, senior centers, ukulele and guitar. And years and years and years of guitar camp. So it's been great. So, um, councillors of Perry would be thrilled. So I don't, so anyways, thank you for applying and I'm in, uh, favor from also, uh, for this candidate. So, so, uh, I, and I'm an I agree. So. All right. Thank you very much. So that's three in favor, uh, passed unanimously. So, uh, as I said to the other candidates, we will now, this is just probably read the resolution again. To make a motion to recommend council to appoint, uh, Thomas Redditt to the Performing Arts Commission as a full member at the term end date of twelve thirty-one twenty-four. And we had unanimous. So, um, so I thank you and we will now move this to the council and then you'll we'll get notified from there. So.
Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
I'll go with Tom.
You've got an active board.
Oh. We're going to have so much fun.
All right.
All right.
Oh, I'm doing well.
I move to recommend to the council a res- resolution on pointing Joseph Burrell to the Citizen and Police Committee as the RTM representative, ex officio member with the term end date of twelve to twenty twenty-five.
Second, I ask you.
And I think Mr. Burrell was in the audience for a moment or a bit and he is a Groton firefighter, I believe. At least his uniform.
Yeah, no.
Well, the point of information.
Yes. My understanding is that Mr. Burrell is appointed by the moderator as the RTM rep. It's just confirmed by the council.
Oh, I see.
My understanding is correct.
That may be correct. That may be right.
I do not believe that is true.
Okay.
I believe that it is, um, that there can be a recommendation by the RTM moderator, but that the appointment is made.
By the county.
Council, town council.
Yes.
And.
Dating me a little bit, but I
I thank you. Did, thank you, um, Chair Jones. Um, thank you for the clarification, Council Russ. Um, this technically then has been a vacancy since, for six months and Mr. Burrell is the only RTM member to apply. So, um, I've had the pleasure of knowing him. Um, so I'm in full support of him being the RTM representative, ex officio member. Um, I'm ready to go.
All right. Call for what's?
I'm.
I.
I. I'm third, I. Mr. Burrell is proved to move forward to the next, um, to the council. All right. We now have two candidates for the, um, a full-time member on the Citizen Police Commission.
I believe there are three openings on this collision. For a conversation with Don Birds and
You appoint three, two people.
And the Chair of the Commission. So if you.
Hmm, I can make a motion. Okay. Motion to recommend a resolution appointing Bruce Falcone and David Hume, um, to the Citizens Police Committee as a full member with a term expiring date of October fifth, twenty twenty-five.
And both, my right in both of these. Correct. Okay. Come on up.
Really done a full one eighty. We go from arts to law enforcement.
A lot about the art.
You can both come up.
I think because we don't have an active theater in town, we don't really see it because they have to go to other towns to do things. So I think.
We have a regional theater here in Groton. Yes.
Where is it?
It's done at Thrive Fifty Five.
Oh, oh.
Anna runs that.
Oh, all right. All right. I was thinking of it like a, like a separate building, but.
Oh, yes, there's a separate building.
Okay. All right. I'm mistaken.
My daughter was the lead super dog in two thousand bitch Brown presentation. I can still remember her sitting there singing on top of a dog house.
So welcome both of you. Thank you for applying for the Citizens Police Commission. Council Russ.
Yes, I'm going to ask you both, um, just give us a background on why you're interested in this commission, what your background's like.
Um, I've been living in Groton Mystic Area since the mid seventies. Um, unfortunately, I've never been able to get involved with things within the town. But now that I'm fully retired of everything, I got some expendable time here. So I thought this would be, uh, a, a good fit for me. Um, with my qualifications, my skill set that I have. Uh, through a number of years working in General Dynamics as a, as a manager, senior manager. And, uh, thirty-seven years in the Army Reserve, retiring as a Colonel and from the military police corps. So I, I feel that I've got a pretty good handle on how organizations need to run, how they should run, why they don't run. And I, I think I would be a positive, a positive voice and, and as far as advice goes to.
I have kind of been around for a while. I started out, uh, my original career was, was police work. I worked like summer constables and things like that and then came a East Line Police Officer, um, back in the seventies. I was a part-timer. And graduated from the they had back in the seventies, uh, like a municipal police academy that they held at Waterford High School that was led by Chief Pendleton So I did that for, for a couple of years. Um, I was a political appointee, but, and then I kind of, um, moved into, I worked for Department of Mental Health, um, and addiction services and nonprofit area for thirty-two years. And I worked a lot with, curiously enough, a lot of police and probation and parole and kind of became kind of, uh, the intermediary with the social services people working with police. So when we called police, it was like, when was the time to, we gave them our needs and our situation and then we had to let the police do their job and not become part of problem and become the injured. Um, I worked a lot with, um, criminal, uh, they, uh, parole, the parole boards. Uh, I worked with the state. Uh, what it called, the people that were basically at whiting. So I did that and, um, so I kind of like retired in two thousand twenty-one and I've been kind of looking to settle into what I want to do with my life. Um, I still do work part-time uh, at like an elderly home. So, uh, I kind of feel like this is a good place for me to to be able to, um, settle in and offer some help and kind of like, uh, general knowledge and perspective. And I feel like I'm able to kind of like listen to both sides of the story and not become a I have a pet peeve about the loudest voice isn't always the right isn't always the right answer. You know, you gotta learn to listen to all sides.
Thank you, Bob.
If I might add, I was also a Williams back in the seventies as well. For several years and left only because of economics. Wife told me I wasn't making enough money. I think we're making five dollars and fifty cents an hour back from seventy-nine.
Thank you, Bob.
They answered my questions.
I think the, the Citizens Police Committee covers a pretty wide range of topics too. It's, um, that deal with different kinds of issues that come up. So. All right. So we're voting on, so one of two candidates, two, two positions. Um, this is your recommendation. To motion to recommend to the council to appoint, uh, Bruce Falcone and David Hume to the Citizens Police Committee Committee as a full member with the term end dating, the term end date of ten five, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Congratulations. This will move to the council and then, you know, approval.
I know somebody asked before, when's the next council meeting?
I didn't hear. Usually the first Tuesday of the month is probably July.
Yeah, I just curious. Yeah, July.
Thank you.
July, right until by first.
That's around there. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Great night. Thank you for your patience. I didn't know we had a theaters. All right. Okay, so we have I, so we have, um, we have a miscellaneous two, right?
Yeah.
Yep, 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 uh.
Chair Jones, I motion to recommend a resolution reappointing Stacy Lettich to the Southeastern Connecticut Regional Resources Recovery Authority with a term end date of April sixteenth, twenty twenty-seven. So moved.
We just and are we doing two people on this? We have David McBride on here.
No, we already appointed him as.
We already appointed. Okay. So it's just Stacy.
Yep.
All right. Uh, those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Passed unanimously. That's it.
And the motion to adjourn.
Second, I ask you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. You're adjourned.
Six.
Six.
Six thirty-eight.
Six thirty-eight. Six.